Chair there, chair there, chair over here. If y'all want to sit.
Yeah, anybody need to sit, I'll stand.
There's room.
Any of you ladies want to sit? Yeah, we can't hear you.
I will give a prayer if you will, please, sir. Our great God, be grateful to you for the opportunity that you did let us say, first of all, to serve you, and then to serve our fellow men. We just ask of you, in your decisions that you're making here, to be in the best interest of peace in every citizen of Scotland County. And we ask for it, that we know that there is an issue on interest, and we just ask that each person here will be mindful of the opinions and feelings and desires of each of us. We just ask that you will respect one another and respect all that are involved in this. And so we ask that all you men, all men, if you will stand here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, ladies, we'll move to the agenda.
Salute.
Ladies and gentlemen, all in favor of the new amendment, aye?
Aye.
Let it light shine. At this time, I will open the public forum. A list of votes to the signed up to see, if you're willing to be forced, a reason to sign in. I ask the board to keep up to the time. And I would ask if there's a group of you that have signed up, and are from the same organization or the same thing, if you're going to talk about the same thing, if you could just have one person to speak for you, or your group, or whatever, if you could and would. Having said that, now we will open the forum and receive the new members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to share a few thoughts with you tonight. As we all are aware, may not be aware, the United States Constitution, in our most powerful legal documents, it contains 4,534 words, and in other words, 27 amendments that deal with issues such as our rights of religion, or even from religion, our rights to free speech and free press, our right to bear arms, our right to any unreasonable search and seizure, our right to a fair fight, the abolition of slave voting rights, as we know, the law given that right vote 100 years ago this year, and abolition under the one repressed, repressive old tax. Those amendments are just a brief summary of our Constitution. But a question that I feel we need to ask ourselves and answer, why do these second amendments, the right to bear arms, take priority? Our arms more importantly to teach, faith, unreasonable search and seizure, our civil rights, the abolition of slavery, and our right vote. Certainly, we already live in a constitutional sanctuary known as the United States of America. We need to ask ourselves, why do we need to single out seven words of 4,534 words to make a special part of it? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Martha R. Robley.
Good evening, Chairperson Davis, Commissioners. Thank you for giving the residents of Scotland County an opportunity to provide input to you as the board considers the proposed second amendment resolution. I am Martha Robley, I live in Warrenburg, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the members of the Minnesota Democratic Party, Member of Lawyer's Committee of the League of Republican Voters of North Carolina. For those who may not be familiar with the League, the League is a nonpartisan organization that believes a democratic government depends on informed and active participational citizens. We believe in representative government and in the individual liberties in the Constitution of the United States. We are proud that 2020 marks the 100th anniversary of the League and the passage of the 19th Amendment, giving all of them the right to vote. Part of the work the League does is concerted study and action on governmental issues in areas where there is member understanding and agreement. The League members nationwide adopted a position on nonpolicing back in 1999, excuse me, which has been amended twice since then. The League supports regulating firearms for consumer safety and public health. For example, the League jumped action in the 2010s in response to the series of mass shootings across our country by pushing for passage of closing gun showroom policy, universal background checks, reading vaccine size, and dealing with home size. In short, the League believes meaningful gun violence prevention laws work to save lives, whereas the Second Amendment's sanctuary resolutions could jeopardize the safety of people in our country. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you. You're proud of the board, aren't you?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Alan Robley, and I live in Warrenburg. I call into question the constitutionality of passing the Second Amendment resolution. Contrary to what supporters of this resolution believe, passage of the resolution is not about Second Amendment rights, but is about the rule of law. Local resolutions do not have the effect of law and cannot preempt any state or federal laws. It's a separation of powers violation for a local sheriff to interpret the Second Amendment and pronounce that the state statutes are unconstitutional. Therefore, he wouldn't enforce duly enacted gun safety laws. It is up to the courts to decide if the law is constitutional, not local government, and certainly not law enforcement. You may think that passing this resolution shows support for our sheriff, and in fact, it does just the opposite. It puts sheriff in a very bad position. He has taken an oath to defend the laws of North Carolina and the laws of the United States. He didn't say to defend some of the laws, or only the ones he agrees with. If sheriffs refuse to follow established laws, there's a possibility of lawsuits, the kind brought by victims of gun violence perpetrated by someone whose gun could theoretically have been confiscated. I do not want my tax dollars, and I assure you don't want yours, to be used to cover court costs, defending the actions of the local sheriff who arbitrarily decides not to enforce the law or a court order because he believes this resolution has passed, gives him government legitimacy to disregard the law, just he believes it violates a perpetrator's Second Amendment rights. This is perhaps the most worrying context of protection of victims of domestic violence. I respectfully request that you vote against the passage of this resolution, but the passage would be a clear rule of law violation.
Thank you, sir. Robert Curry.
Please pardon my impaired hearing, and please, if you will, give me a signal when my time is soon to be up, because I don't have a watch out either. Just want to say a few comments very quickly, if possible. I agree with the sheriff, guns do not kill people, it's the people behind the guns. It's a very true regard. I partially agree with Commissioner Carlson. There are too many guns, but not in the world, in the wrong hands. When guns are in the right hands, nothing goes wrong. I was raised with guns, I was trained as a child to use a 22 caliber, single shot rifle because of eggs sucking, chicken stings in the chicken house, and opossums, which we called posses at the time, predators in the livestock ashers. I have survived three personal attacks, as well as attacks on our property with a Rellington 9066, a Winchester lever action, and a military grade semi-automatic weapon, which only four shots from that weapon stopped 12 to 14 dogs, vicious dogs, and an impact on our livestock. It doesn't take an assault weapon for anything that I have survived. Once one shot is fired, usually the intent of whoever's perpetrating the crime, human or animal, will turn around. But, as Americans, we need to honor the light of American citizens to own whatever weapon they should and want to own, as long as they are all mighty citizens, but with restrictions. Just as we are allowed to own and drive cars, we're required by law to wear seat belts. We're not allowed in the city limits to burn trash, or refuse leaves, or whatever we call the public safety. Anyone who can afford and feels that they need to own assault weapons should be required simultaneously to buy and purchase a locked box, a gun safe that a bulldozer could not penetrate. For any time that they're not attending that weapon personally, burglars break in while we're away from our home. I've been through that twice, I have precious gun my grandfather gave to me, stolen from me and never retrieved. People who want to own assault weapons should be required to put them in absolute security when they're unattended, and required to join a militia, a well-regulated, well-organized militia, train with them, and meet with them regularly, not because of somebody who might break into the house, some assault weapon is going to do it there, neither is a handgun and a locked box on the top shelf of the closet. Law and regulation is what we need, but America is resupplied, and we need a well-organized militia. Have you reached?
Curry, I think you reached.
Okay, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, sir.
John Lewis. John Lewis, Waver, North Carolina. I'll try to be brief. The preamble of the Constitution includes words, "Ensuring domestic tranquility and promoting general welfare," among other things. The Second Amendment, along with other amendments, I think, are written with the idea of supporting that language and not counteracting it. Unfortunately, we've gotten to a place where the technology possibly exceeds some of the abilities that were originally thought of when that was proposed. There's a frequent statement that's already been referred to here, "Guns don't kill people, people kill people," and with that, I refer back to the Parkland situation and say two things. Well, there's two warnings the FBI got about the shooter, that he was number one, thinking of becoming a professional school shooter, and number two, that a little later, after they got that warning, they got another one that said that he was stockpiling weapons, and then a month later, there was the shooting. Now, New Mexico's a recent state that has adopted apparently some red flag laws, and there's discrepancy between the governor and the sheriffs of some of the counties. And so what I'm trying to determine is, since this shooter at Parkland is obviously somebody that should not have a gun, because he's one of those people that killed people, would this sanctuary statement prevent the sheriff from working with the FBI if they had noticed, that they had been informed that there was somebody in this county who was trained to be a school shooter, and who was stockpiling weapons, and in fact, they would just say, "Well, sorry, we're a sanctuary county, we can't help you." That's my question.
Not.
Then, I also want to just say one thing. We're here about protecting the rights of citizens under the Second Amendment. I'm thinking that before we did that, we should come here protecting us from the First Amendment, as after all, it was the President who said that the press is the enemy of the people. Where's the outrage?
Thank you, sir. I believe this is a statement of good news.
Thank you, Chairperson Davis, Commissioners. 2008, United States to bring forth, really settle the issue of whether or not a person can possess and carry a firearm in the case of D.C. versus Delaware. Just to salivate, no flinging liberal by any credit to the imagination, but it's a thoroughly well-written issue of the Second Amendment rights in North Carolina, our issue of the United States. I would commend that to you and anyone in the room, to get through it, it's 129 pages of that opinion, very limited. The Supreme Court had it again in 2010, years later. Applied the Second Amendment to states in the case of Alvin versus Chicago. And as everyone's aware, a county is a public subdivision state, therefore, the county is covered by rules that the Justice Department has set down regarding the performance and use of firearms. This resolution is ridiculous. I would say that way, it protects all citizens that don't have a right to carry any of their firearms, all citizens. For being a law enforcement officer in Scotland County, from enforcing any gun laws, this is the language for a law enforcement attorney. It says that you, as county commissioner, will not find any agency, organization, group that reinforces any firearms limits. I don't want to be an advocate in Scotland County. Possession of weapons of mass destruction, only goes to North Carolina family. Possession of weapons on school property, family, North Carolina. Possession of weapons by family, family. Possession of weapons in a chamber, family. Possession of a starting, family. This ordinance puts your officer in a position to say that I'm not going to reinforce, and this is not only, this is the one that's currently on the longstanding, it's the one that we're... Put your hand in a careful position. Say, "I'm not going to reinforce that, because I've got the option of one of two things. One, if I enforce that law, I can lose my job, because you said that technique cannot be funded." Okay, so that's option one. So if they follow this ordinance in a kind of way, they can fire. Number two, if they don't enforce it, you guys are going to get the pen laws. Now, I come to this, not as a novice, I'm a assistant Capitol defender, I live here in Warrenburg, I am a senior assistant Capitol defender in the Ross County office, I do this every day. I do it for people every day. They're charged not with misdemeanor, or above, and my job every day is to be a Capitol defender. And I am telling you, this makes my job easy. And nobody really likes to hear a serious anecdote.
Thank you.
Wayne Wise.
Thank you, Commissioner, for offering time to speak. I'm Wayne White, pastor of the Purdy Pastor of Warrenburg. I don't speak when I have my church, but I do speak as a local clergyman. If you group the clergyman together, there's high probability that the conversation's going to revolve around the three D's: bodies, bucks, and buildings. We're all scratching and clawing, trying to find people to join our churches, make a vibrant, and to help our community, to be a better place for all of us to live and prosper. We're also deflating budget deficits, trying to do budgets, and continue to decline because escalating costs. But when we start talking about buildings, we're not talking about asbestos removal, we're not talking about new construction. More times than not, we're talking about safety, because as we know by reading some of the reports across the nation, justice in Southern Carolina and elsewhere, our houses of worship have not been spared regarding people coming in and murdering people, people that love them, and then after such horrific events, found within their capacity to offer grace and forgiveness to the shooters who committed such horrendous duties. At our church alone, we joke that we have more cameras and lights than the shooting hood in Hollywood. I'm talking about the security lights and the security cameras. This is a big issue, and as I read the resolution for this body tonight, it reads more as a resolution, as an advocate of the Second Amendment, return as opposed to providing guidance and direction for a clergyman like myself to be able to go back to my church and my colleagues and say, "We have a better, safer environment going forward." I would ask you respectfully not to affirm this resolution, if the intent of the authors is one of advocating and supporting the Second Amendment, it stands alone, it's already been passed, there's no need for us to become a champion of it, it's already there, and there are national groups that have this tradition statement to do that just, that one thing. What I would ask you instead is to consider how can we make our houses of worship truly places of sanctuary, places of peace and comfort, where people can come and feel safe, instead of how we have in some of the churches, even in our community, with laymen carrying guns as a way of providing safety for parishioners. I have pretty academic degrees in religion, I've yet to find a scripture passage for Jesus' patheed. So I ask you to look at this, not in terms of support of the Second Amendment, but look at it and see what can we do to make houses of worship places of safety, peace, and comfort. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Ken Jackson, I live in Scottsdale, and I must have grown up in a different world than the people that have talked before me. When I was five years old, I developed supervision when I was carrying guns around. When I was seven years old, I was driving cars. I am a benefactor, life member of the National Rifle Association, I have concealed carry permit, and I belong to the Wager and Foreman Association. You hear about from the newscasters, all these tragedies that take place, but you don't hear about the things that the gun has done to these good. There are over two million instances a year where the armed citizen has stopped a felony in progress, and most of them without a firing shot. The armed citizen in this country is also the largest standing armed in the world, and that's one reason why we've never been invaded. Now, you know, Phil, that I do, that the cause of most of these shootings and that are never explained to you, they don't explain whether they're a drug issue, they don't explain whether it's an animal health issue, they don't explain whether it's gang wars, wherever it is. Now, and him, if he may, he can supply these to his church without somebody protecting him, Lord help him, because I don't know. And I'm asking to devote forward this Second Amendment that has been requested by the sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I don't have a piece of paper or a speech or anything, but I was here for the last meeting, and Estette seemed to have spoke for me and everybody else who was here. I feel it's my right, I don't know if you're going to rewrite this story, or you're going to try to rewrite this story, but I want to also know, who's going to protect me, and who's going to protect all these people here, okay? And you're going to not have a gun, and you're not going to have a gun, and you're not going to have a gun? I mean, come on. We want to give the illegals the right to vote, but you want to take those people and not give them the right to bear arms? I mean, what is this? It's our right, we're Americans. I'm a military kid, from a military family, and a big police family, from Massachusetts. Nobody's going to take my gun, and I'll guarantee you, no one's going to take their guns. And I'm pretty upset, I'm pretty upset that you, Estette, as beautiful as you are, society, that you don't want anything to do with it, while I'm speaking the truth. Can I not speak the truth?
Do you think that you do not address one of the committees?
Am I not allowed, am I not allowed to speak the truth? I want to know. It is my right. And I don't feel, I don't feel right now, that this is just...
Do not address one of the committees, please.
I can't hear you, I don't want to speak anything right now. It is our right, and I think it's everybody's right, we're not going to rewrite this story, it's already been written, and I feel that by the time the police, who have many other problems, get to us, unless you've got one for each and every one of us, then we're out of luck, one of us is out of luck, or 10 of us is out of luck, or 50 of us are out of luck. And unless you can guarantee nothing's going to happen to us, I'm good with that. I'm not good with you taking away my rights, all my life. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. If you would, hold your hall up, please, my dear ones. Carol Ryan.
Commissioners, I'm Carol Ryan from Basta, in Scotland County. I believe this is unnecessary legislation. We already have Second Amendment in the Constitution, which is emphasized as giving the people the right to eat and bear arms. We do not need legislation at the local level to do with federal laws. This proposed county ordinance raises fear, whereas unnecessary and should not be passed. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I live in Warrenburg. I appreciate you letting me speak. I've heard a lot about the law weird and a lot about rights, criminal rights, and I've heard a lot about abortion. I don't think we have a problem here in Scottsdale County with the law-abiding citizens toting guns. Our sheriff is here tonight to ask him if he has a problem with the law-abiding citizens toting guns. Well, we need to, as criminals who have a gun, we don't need to make any laws to hinder a law-abiding citizen from toting guns. It's the laws, and you can look at Chicago, they have all, they have the strictest gun laws in America, yet the highest murder rates. It's not the law-abiding citizen we need to address. It's the persons who have been convicted crimes, already in prison. These prisoners sit around who commit murder, talk about not their remorse, but the mistakes they made, get caught. And if you don't have the weapons to protect yourself, the sheriff can't be at every house. The police can't be at every house. I would rather be judged by 12 than be carried by six. When they come to your house, when it's your home, when it's your daughter, or your granddaughter, your child, which was murdered, don't pally off anyone else if you vote against the Second Amendment rights. Yes, we do have the Second Amendment, but our amendment is being trampled upon by this government every day. We need to affirm that we believe in the Second Amendment and that we believe in the country. We set the pledge, listen to the flag. We pray to God. Do you truly believe in America? Do you truly believe in this God that you pray to? If you do, then protect our citizens. I vote yes on this matter.
Russian, last name, I'm sorry. Weston?
I'm Weston Russian, and I want to correct the petition to be, well, we're of the Troplas Johnson Station in Southland County. Also, it's a court, Ralph Cursey, our chef, Southland County, and I'm very proud of him. This resolution he's trying to get passed, all he wants to do is get on record. I want to take that back, boys, and I don't thank anyone if you remember this. December 30th, 1976. My father was retired military policeman out of service, trained in handling weapons. That night, I got back from Florida earlier that morning. We were leaving this business. We met two men with shotgun guns in Sheroka at our house, waiting for us, ambushed. My father had this, that's the only thing that saved our lives at that time. Got to Las Vegas, I stayed in Warrenburg Hospital for seven days. I got to Cheltenham Hill seven days later. I still had grass on my arm in the hospital. I think I've got more things to consider in this county to get things better than taking 52 guns away from me. My father later on, a few years later, I just got to work in Wainbridge that morning. Phone rang, I answered, it was my wife. She said, "Oh, shoot, that sword." He ran a sword in this county for over 50 years on us. I told her I was on the way, she said, "Wait a minute, your father's a cat, I saw him walk around a sword." A guy had got nothing at one, and I remember, owed his wife, he was going to leave, he was going to get money, get coke before sunset. If he didn't, he was going to leave dead in hell. All he got was a switch at that. He robbed a grown sword. There was six people on that sword that could have lost their lives. And one of them ran out, he had nine hundred and something dollars in his pocket. He had a pistol in his hand, he ran out to try to get it to the van. He ran out hollering, old time armed robber, old enough. My father was outside on the sword looking. He heard, he came around, he confronted the guy, thirty feet away, the guy was about twenty or thirty years old, I think. My father was sixty. He dropped, he dropped one bullet, one shot. I don't think it's right to take people's, well, this way. I don't think it's all people, at any adult that is shot in a, oh, thirty feet away from the shot in a, uh. The sheriff's department didn't get out of there in time, and about a bit of time, my mother was in a household, a toddler, someone else. This is the resolution, we need people ready for Scottsdale County to protect citizens for this county. I don't thank anybody in here, I've tried to look at everybody tonight, and I don't thank anybody in here who's been shot at before. So if that doctor got his switch at night, I don't want to have a hard yellow book edition, but he's going to take my arm off. My mother did something, but that's the only reason I got this one thing, and I can use it. You don't need to take that weapon, sir. You didn't write, I know all of them, I know them all a lot. So you need to have the right to protect themselves. And if somebody in my house says, "Tonight, 2:00 in the morning, don't move." It's not the first time, Ralph can't have weapons everywhere. Leave the testes. I vote for this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
David Rader, Warrenburg. A couple of those guys that have shown points, I was going to say, the law-abiding citizens are not for problems. They're criminals. They're evil in the world. A criminal is going to find a way to get what they need to do their evil. I didn't think it was going to pass. I've been shot in the chest. I went to court. You know what they did? $500 fine, two years probation. Guy never served time. I mean, you can't protect people, you can't, in the fourth quarter, you have to look, I mean, the sky can shoot any, and they're all, what's a sniper doing to me? I don't hold that gun responsible, it was to get it behind a truck. That gun was laying in the truck, it's a handgun. It has to have a person, an evil person, to make that. There's other people in here that I know that they didn't move out of call, and it's Scottsdale County Sheriff and Warrenburg Police Department. None against this person, because we are law-abiding citizens, we're not criminals. So why come down on us and try to take our weapons that we use to defend ourselves? That's all I'm saying. If I need to protect myself, I have had evil or more, I wouldn't come to us. Thank you.
Sir, what were you doing, David Rader?
David Rader?
How you spell the last name?
R A D E R.
My name is Franklin Strickland. I live out in Marston, out in the county. Scottsdale County's a big county, y'all know that. Ralph Cursey, he's got a good crew. I see him out in the woods, I'm out, I look quite often, but that's not enough. And what Sheriff Cursey is asking for is the right to do his job. All this rhetoric that we're hearing about constitutional rights, what your gun rights should be, and what's an assault weapon? I can make these glasses an assault weapon in my hand, but I don't know what to do when it's evil. Do the same thing with a gun. You've got to know what you're doing. And a good man will come assault a bad man when he comes every time, for me. Another thing. Everybody that's in a political office anymore seems to think that our Constitution restricts us, when in fact, it restricts every one of you that is restricted by that. So that you cannot trample our rights, you cannot assault our amendments that were put in place 247, 43 years ago now? Wow? But it's worked good so far. I've lived in big cities, I just moved back to Scottsdale County. I retired, 30 years in St. Peter's Union, traveled all over the world, been to some of the weirdest places you want to go. And I survived because I'm good at hand-to-hand combat, I always throw the weapon, whether it be a knife, a credit card, or something I got to pick up, and I'm always alert. I just moved back here from California. I spent 15 years in California, from south through the north, working, living, San Diego, armpitted world, Sacramento, the butthole of the world. And I'll tell you, I've watched the transformation in San Francisco, California, all up and down the coast, I've watched the transformation. I lived there for it, I lived through it. I was assaulted multiple times, but I'm still here because I know how to take care of me. Everybody don't have my skills. Everybody don't know how to watch or back fight like I do. By the grace of God, brother, that's why we're all here. By the grace of God. Same goes for me. But I'd like to know, if somebody's going to boss up to my house and take what I got, I got the right to defend myself. Not with my hand-to-hand combat skills, but with an AR-15, which is an armament rifle, it's an assault weapon. If you went into the military with an AR-15 and went on the battlefield, you'd be a complete fool. What they're shooting, something like coming today, that .400 mag I got, they're wiping the life out of them. So what y'all need to really get down with in this meeting is the fact that our constitutional rights are not for you to judge whether you're going to uphold them or ignore them. They're there for a reason, and we will fight for them. And we will elect you out of office, every single one of you, if you vote yes. Yes, sir, I've had it.
You pray, Dave, Warrenburg. I was there and I was pleased to leave this flag. But yet you want to talk the Second Amendment rights. Okay, so you take my Second Amendment rights, all right, then we want to take the rights of whom, but? Then we want to take freedom of speech, so I cannot even come up here and speak my mind about the thing that they then wrote in our Constitution. Y'all do not want to surrender to the Constitution? You don't care about the Constitution? You want to be elected, you want to be in all power. But yet we do not have the right to defend ourselves, our families, our property. If somebody's here that's going to do harm to any of us, they're not going to the gun shop to buy a gun. They're going to steal the gun, all right? I want to go legally. My gun doesn't hurt anybody. But if somebody tries to hurt me and my family, I have the right to defend myself and not be an unarmed victim. I mean, I don't think anybody here wants to be an unarmed victim. And, uh, so if you sit there and you play a clip with that flag, let's, uh, honor to save the Constitution and not try to take any amendment away from us or force the Sheriff to do something that he knows in his heart, I don't know in y'all's heart, is wrong. Thank you.
My name is Howard James. I've been in Warrenburg 15 years. I don't say a whole lot. I spent 21 years on a full combat tour. I know what it feels like to get shot at and defend myself. I had the right to come back here, defend myself, my life, my own. The Second Amendment was made for us to protect ourselves against government, that's right here. And I'm not here to destroy the United States of America. But if you will never, ever take my home, take my weapons, let the guy sit in Florida. I got a little witness in my house, wanted to come to your house. I have all of you. But mine, I had a rifle. An AR is an assault weapon. I can shoot my pistol as fast as anybody here to shoot AR-15s. It's a semi-automatic weapon. An AR is an automatic weapon, going to find a military. We have that right as citizens. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Johnis Miller, and I am a proud student of Scottsdale County Public Schools. Mass shootings have slowly become a commodity in today's America. Like most nationwide problems, mass shootings have no one solution. I like to compare it to an onion, multi-layered. And because it is multi-layered, it has multiple solutions. A few solutions to the problem are stricter gun laws, ban on assault level or caliber, or high caliber weapons, and increase in mental health awareness. Everyone has a Second Amendment right to bear arms. This is essential to American democracy. I do not believe that there should be a complete ban on all guns as a whole, because it would violate our rights. However, because of lax gun laws, specifically in reference to the age a person can purchase a gun, the rate of deaths by guns have reached a starting new high. With the increase in mass shootings in America, one thing is seemingly apparent in almost every instance: assault weapons. Assault weapons were never meant for recreationally use. They are meant for mass shooting and are traditionally used in war. However, they have been used repeatedly by civilians to commit mass murders. Based off findings of Children's Hospital at Philadelphia Research Institute, on June 12, 2016, a Pulse nightclub, at a Pulse nightclub, a single shooter killed 49 people and injured 53. It was the worst mass shooting in U.S. history, until the mass shooting in Las Vegas in October 2017, took 58 lives and leaving 546 injured. And a year ago, at Mandalay Bay Hotel, there was, the shooter was shooting from, where the shooter was shooting from, I once stayed at this hotel a few years ago. With a complete ban of assault gun, assault weapons, the overall rate of gun violence may not drop drastically, but it is one step on the right path. A gun that can shoot 45 rounds per minute, according to no Washington examiner, is no reason being in the hands of a civilian. We no longer live in a society where schools or campuses should be an open school. We need stronger regulations. As students, we already have a hard enough job to meet the expectations of our families, our school, and our community. These changes that we demand will allow students who desire to learn and strive at our schools and colleges without worry, without fear, and without dismay. Although many try to blame the increase of gun violence solely on the gun, there must be a blame on place on the person. According to the National Alliance on Mental Health, on mental illness, approximately one in five adults in the U.S., 43.8 million, experiences mental illnesses in a given year. Many mass shootings or people with severe mental, are people...
Yeah, that's about done. That's about enough of that.
Are people with severe...
When you're sitting there spewing false narratives right now, she's spewing false narratives, she didn't know what she's talking about. Gun is not shooting 45 rounds. Please.
Counsel, it's three minutes, it's past, wait, it's three minutes.
You're not going to garner any more than one time if I'm lying.
Are people with severe...
Please, bring everybody in.
However, because of this thing...
Y'all are not doing what your job is. This is ignorant. Get out what you're doing. I'm not having a party in Congress. We said it's free parties. Run and break the entire way. You're allowing me to come here? What's the world for making them up as they got?
You don't have any deal, I'm a veteran of the United States Army.
Johnis Miller.
And you have to be a 15-year-old.
J H N A.
I still want to applaud the work that our board is doing when it comes to gun control, you gotta say. But the most important thing would be, I'm sorry, this is... You gotta say, but the most important thing would be, I'm sorry, did you want me to look at something that you have?
Yeah.
You have the rules. Okay, I'm speaking now. Is that okay? I gotta check this. Again, I just think, um, my pastor, coming out of his words, Mr. Madugle, and that's why it's personal, it understands the military, the community, and put together, and also understanding that we can do more by communicating than sitting here not listening to each other. Because each of us have a voice and have a voice. They have a sanctuary city for the second amendment. I told you on Paul two, because it's a mistake earlier, that means that you cannot abide by a federal law or state law. And first of all, we are a body of people and a body of rules, and we also are a body of each other. We're in this together. We all were survived. We seen too many awesome young people's lives, older people, and it has been for the good of individuals who were once healthy, didn't have any mental issues. People, our bodies change every day. And if we weren't realizing that now, there's people that were once able to drive that shit that's unable to drive today. Our brains and minds change. And one thing that nobody can say up here on this floor is that once you leave on, the ownership of the weapon is still there. And most of the time, we don't have that track. Who's the new owner? And once you get sick, and some of us do get sick, some people can get dementia. You might not. But what's that does happen to one or two of us, and you have a weapon. The enemy becomes within you. So I say to you all, that having the second amendment, that's not constitution. But having a sanctuary city for the second amendment, that's allowing people to simply say, I can break the law if I truly do so. That's really what I'm saying.
Joe Patton, Martha. Yes, sir. I'd just like to try to bring this round, or clear to what this is about, how this is all going along. As far as, my good friend, you said earlier, you know, why are we stressing the second amendment more than the individual amendments that we have? It's because our neighbor to the north, Virginia, just tried to take citizens' right to bear arms away from them. All we're asking for, and another gentleman, I think it's a lawyer, said, why are you duplicating second amendment laws? We're not making laws here, we're not asking to make laws. All we're trying to do is to get the Board of Trustees to confirm that they will support the second amendment, and that's it. If, you know, when we see what's going on in Georgia, Virginia, all we're asking is if North Carolina, if San Antonio loses their mind, like Virginia just did, that you all will not force our shared, gonna take our bonus for all lives. That's all we're asking. All right, thank you.
My name is Stephen Dickens. I live on Stone Wall Road in Loringburg. And I just wanted to say, this has been really troubling. This has gotten out of control. As far as I know, I listen to a lot of news, I read a lot of news. I read a lot about the news. I haven't heard nothing federal, state level, or local level by anyone trying to take anyone's guns away. That is not what this is about. I am a gun owner, I support the second amendment, but this has just gotten out of control. It's, this is America, we're supposed to listen to one another. We're a common, divided country, but we need to come back together, just shut the hell up and listen to one another. And I'd like to state to the record that, excuse my language, ain't no damn way to get America, United States of America, they don't take our guns away. It ain't for half. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else?
I got one question. One of these ten cops are in shots. There's a little one, uh, armed, wore armor. I got one question. I mean, I live out there in the boonies. There's no cops in Loringburg, oh, wait. Loringburg is ten minutes away, Long Hills, seven. By the time law gets there, what am I? Dead. Or a shooter, dead. But you know what's in my house? He's gonna find out when he takes that gun. That's all that's second, that's all I'm all for. I'm in. Anybody else?
My name is Charles James. And, uh, I think, I think that you need to apologize to that young lady as a student of, uh, Scotland High. But, uh, she tried to come up here and speak, and we had somebody interrupt her all the time. So I think that, you know, a kid like that has to come up and try to talk to somebody. But I'm against, I'm against that, and I hope you vote again.
My name is Eric Farrell, husband of Wagner. And I've heard an amazing amount of fiction. Eric Farrell. And I think we've heard from quite a few people, and I think we've heard an amazing amount of fiction here. But what you guys are proposing is that we have law-abiding criminals. That's what you're proposing when you talk about sanctuary cities. And that's all I can say about that.
My name is Douglas Holm. And I just wanted to clarify, because AR-15 is not an assault weapon. Everybody calls it an assault weapon, you have to pull the trigger to send a bullet down your barrel. It's not an automatic weapon like military uses. And if you give me any handgun with ten rounds and clip, give me four clips, and as that little lady said, I can fire forty rounds in less than a minute. So ten rounds and clip aren't gonna do anything. But I just really wanted to say that an AR-15 is not an assault weapon. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Commission of members. My name is Walter Rogers. I live in the Grayland Incorporated Conference of Law here in Illinois. I think, irregardless of what the situation is, irregardless of how you feel about it, there is a problem and an improper way to address it. Certainly, at times, we get excited, we get emotional, but we always have to respect the rights of others. You all are there because we, the citizens of Scotland County, elected you. And we should have the fairness to give you an opportunity to do your job. Thank you.
I feel I can turn another, um, piece of time. I'm gonna close the, uh, public forum and move on. We had an hour of roughly, both sides, uh, you will need to approve the consent agenda. I'm late, I'm stuck, all the papers are in there, they're high. Close the mic. Next, we will have the public hearing, uh, resounding request, Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I am here in the absence of Sam Stone, and I was gonna ask what you want. Uh, Mr. Stone, my chairman is the old seat, he's the last chairman. I can ask him to take his place. The public hearing is for resounding request for eighty-eight thousand twenty. This is the resounding motion, I am of my Scotland County from Resident Agriculture of Oakland State. This property in question has been planted and unearthed in water for a hundred months for, uh, pardon, uh, earth and flowers. The county has pursued the grant versus homes, under the fact that by paring and wind conditions, the grant is that the county tests possession, everything on the property be demolished and land turned to green space. And the question is, if this is only be done, uh, again, from Resident Agriculture to Oakland State and apply with, uh, this grant, and the resounding board approved this resounding, and by that point, I don't know where I'm supposed to do that.
Under the question, do you have any questions? Do you have any? If there's anyone in the audience who would say, please, or again, you're moving, you, uh, that's going to, uh, whether or not you're not
Just can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Kevin, is this property still a road? We have that flood.
Two, uh, two
Yeah, I don't, I don't
All right, he's home, President. At night, and I was gonna say, well, I should be a president, say this, so.
Somebody
I'm late, I'm stuck, I'm in the seven. All the papers are in there, they're high. Close the mic. Thank you very much. Thank you, dear. Here, my friend, you're turning, and we will be
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can everyone hear?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to address the board. For our last meeting in February, uh, regular, the sheriff presented two board resolutions concerning second amendment and the right to keep them there on. The board asked me to review resolutions and to make legal comments to the board. I have before tonight written some comments that I intend to address the board, where I'm gonna amend those comments to add some to them. First of all, the review idea I did in a dispassionate way, without emotion, uh, I tried to give this board the best advice I can, but I'll take a side if there is a side of this issue. What I thought of this, in this case and every case, is to provide this board with the legal options that it has. The board generally has a right to adopt resolutions concerning policies if it chooses to. And it also has a right not to adopt resolutions if it chooses not to do so. So one of the options the board has tonight is not to adopt this resolution. Another option is, if the board desires to do so, may it opt a resolution or a decision. You asked me to analyze the sheriff's request in the public. I have some concerns that I've summarized in the resolution, and I'll share it with you. My first concern is the usage of the word sanctuary. Sanctuary for decades meant a hate. More recently, sanctuary, or sanctuary, has taken on a connotation that's quite different from a hate with regard to immigration issues. Sanctuary cities, counties, and states have become associated with avoidance, compliance with federal immigration law, and the refusal to assist certain federal agency with regards to immigration. The current administration is withholding or cutting federal funding to some degree to sanctuary restrictions. Although the existence has declared itself to be sanctuary for immigration purposes. It's my understanding that recent court rulings have sanctioned the administration's practice of cutting funding. While the current administration may not withhold funds over second amendment sanctuaries, a future, different administration may view this manner differently, and that's the opposite view. So it's my belief that if the board were to adopt the resolution, including the word sanctuary, and designate a somehow sanctuary, there is a real possibility that we could have a cutting federal fund which will most need to be used on account. My further concern is that even if the specific word sanctuary is not used in the resolution, if it, if the resolution indirectly says the same thing, then it's a little better. That was my initial concern. My second concern, and this will be true for anything that the board did, is that this board, uh, avoid committing itself, or in the future board, to the course of action based on unknown circumstances. To declare that Scotland County government will not authorize or appropriate funds or use resources in employees or agencies or offices, which is a part of the, of the resolution. If a law or rule infringes on the right, it's not advisable, I'm telling you. If you fail to enforce an act which is mentioned in the resolution, an act being a law adopted by the General Assembly of Southern North Carolina, or a law which is an action taken by the US Congress, or an order which is an action by another branch that we judiciary, you couldn't have potential liability for the court or a county. The real issue in that particular component of this resolution is who makes the determination of what may be considered unconstitutional. It will not be this board, it will not be the sheriff. Legally, it should be determined by a court. There are a number of substantial, severe, negative repercussions given that the resolution is passed to authorize that type of activity, in my opinion. I've already mentioned the fact that the federal government may withhold funding, the state may choose to do the same thing. The county could be sued, uh, the state of North Carolina, also the United States government. And I agree or concur with one of the speakers said that it's quite possible that an individual that would be harmed under certain circumstances where a particular law is not enforced, might have a right to action as well. Further, if actions occur that are not in accord with a court order, a valid, genuine court order, there will be a remedy that the county could define. All county officials would be held in contempt of court and punished for contempt of court. My advice to the board on this particular aspect of the resolution is to not adopt the policy committing this board, or in the future board, to a fixed position of, or something has occurred. It's incredibly difficult to predict, what set the circumstances, this board or a future board, they, they require to press. And I will never advise the board. Representatives work a long time, I've never advised it, and when will I ever advise it? To adopt the policy authorizing non-compliance of federal law, state act, or a court. law, state act, or a court. That, that is a very probably provision on this resolution. Further, I would point out to the board and to the rest of the audience that don't know this, the eight members of this board, when you took office, took an oath, uh-oh, and penned the United States State Constitution, and there is really no requirement that you confirm your support of those constitutions that are stable there. So an argument could be made that this is really superfluous, those who already taken an oath, the same thing that you're going to ask for it here. And I said earlier, the board has discretion in the collective wisdom of seven of you to adopt resolution or not adopt resolutions. If you choose to proceed without a resolution, there's a draft resolution in your agenda. And I'm not suggesting that the board has to adopt a resolution, although I have a draft there, but it's always up to you with judgment to determine how you choose to proceed. But I would, I would say, point out that the draft resolution in the agenda, it does several things. It confirms, what I just said, that each of the board members took an oath to uphold the United States Constitution and the Constitution of North Carolina. And the line in the agenda resolution was correct upon the second amendment, and also the United States Constitution as to the right of law-abiding citizens, law-abiding citizens to keep their arms. Secondly, the resolution confirms that you as a board intend to uphold the second amendment rights of law-abiding citizens, uh, believe all the persons who have rights that should be protected, keep their arms. Thirdly, the resolution, the board would, uh, resolution, uh, state that it abuses authority and accorded with advice of legal counsel, which I think you should always have if you're wanting to exercise that authority, to protect the rights of all abiding citizens to keep their arms. It's a fairly straightforward resolution, but it correctly addresses the request to perpetuate rights under the second amendment. As I listen to the comments tonight, I had the impression maybe there was some misconceptions about the effect of a thing to adopt a resolution. I do not believe that if you adopt the sheriff's resolution, that it would have the effect affecting anyone's lives. None of the protections under the second amendment or the Constitution of State would be stripped from anyone, nor would it prevent a citizen under the broader circumstances from exercising this authority to self-defense. So those are one of the options the board has before it. It's left to the board to assess this matter and to exercise the will to conserve people on board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate Mr. Johnson. Does any of the commissioners have a question for Mr. Johnson? If not, then I'm going to ask that if you have a desire to address the audience, I'll put the same restrictions I left that I did on the audience, uh, I'll give you a brief amount of time in it, and after her, behind you, and we'll all kind of do with, uh, keep it.
Uh, I didn't have any comment other than I respect the Constitution and the Seventh Amendment. Everybody has the right to set the amendment rights. No one is going to take away anybody's guns. It is a seven amendment, and we respect that as commissioners.
I feel the same way. I, I, I'm not taking anybody's guns.
Having not been here, um, last, at last month's meeting, um, and reading the original proposed, uh, uh, a couple of things that, um, gave you some concern, I think, that Mr. Johnson's provision has, uh, satisfied him in my mind, uh, I also wanted to repeat what Mr. Johnson just said, I don't think there's any purpose in anything that this board would wish to do or even has the power to do, to eliminate anybody's right to have and bear ownership. Um, I, um, proportionately or unfortunately, I've been sworn in, I think thirteen different times in the last fifty years, uh, and have taken an oath each of those times to uphold the Constitution of, of, of the State of North Carolina and the United States of America. Um, I am a army brat, I'm a gun owner, I have, you know, concealed gun in Birmingham. Um, I, I, like many of you, I intend to protect myself and my wife and my family and my home. I don't think there's any intention by any member of this board to, uh, to do, to, to take away anyone's right to do that. Um, I do think there's some, perhaps hesitation to pass the resolution because we feel like it may already, that, that we take that oath every time we take office. Um, because somebody asked me today if I support the second amendment, and I'm going to tell yes, so I guess I'm not sure that I feel particularly hesitant to do it publicly in the form of a resolution.
Do you? You're involved in, you're going to say.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of y'all for being here, and I hope I see you all there. Uh, anyway, uh, thank you for being here, it's been a very lively, um, discussion, and we've heard many points. My comment, uh, I do appreciate Mr. Johnson's, uh, remarks, and I concur with him, and we have, uh, certainly due to jealousy because of the request that we made last month to research this, I myself have copies of about eighty or ten different resolutions that have been asked across the State of North Carolina. Firstly, I want to say that this resolution is not about sheriff urging, and it's not about the seven commissioners sitting on this board. It is about everyone that has taken that oath, or elected or hired. We all take the same oath, and we place our hand on the, well, with your choice, property or the Holy Bible, and it becomes sacred. I've done it three times, and I know it is fair enough, my serving as the county commissioner here in Scottsdale County. So I do support the second amendment. The conversation, uh, talk with about the types of guns, about taking away guns, and that sort of thing, but I want to be mindful of what we're talking about here, we're talking about the oath that we all took, and everyone for an officer in the county. So, to me, I think that we're in this all together. We all want to pass the second amendment, everyone elected or appointed to take the same oath on the Bible to support the Constitution of the United States, the law of their government, and North Carolina. But I think that we need to be mindful of that as we go forward, and to pay, pay attention to remarks from Mr. Johnson, and not to encumber ourselves, oppose the lawsuits, to defend resources that we may not have, to defend something that we cannot even predict, that women can have. It's about assurance, and I think this board of commissioners, I know that I can ensure that people come in and, uh, support the second amendment, and the right to bear arms for all abiding citizens to be able to defend themselves or their families in the court.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Johnson said I have three minutes, so I need to stand when I have three minutes. Came here prepared tonight to, oh, yes, I'll read, but after listening to our attorney, you heard what he said, and then we even for the meeting discussed all of this, and so you heard it for the first time. And I heard some things I did that really concerned me, some folk have a fear that they're going to not be taken, if we don't adopt this, well, you know now that you don't have to have that fear. This would be done on an actual level, on a local level, if it were to ever happen. It's not even worth it this time, the way they can predict what will happen in the future, but I certainly don't want to divide this county, but I can see the folk on county even divided, a lot of decisions that we might make. But now I know that any decision I make would just be simple, it would have no bearing on anything, on anybody. The Constitution is the Constitution, and I've taken an oath, I don't know, six or seven times, to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America and North Carolina, and I have read the United States Constitution, I went to the library, he gave it off, uh, I went on a cruise, I read it all, didn't understand it all, but I know that everyone here has the right to bear arms, and it's nothing we can do to take it away, and that ever was to happen is not to be worked out in the courts, not in commission meetings. We have no control over it and no power over it. That would happen by judges, and that's beyond our pay grade. I appreciate everyone of you coming here, but if I could fix this, I would, but if it, it'll get broken and need to be fixed, it will not be fixed by your board of commissioners. Thank you.
You know, uh, colorful things to start off with, to thank Mr. Johnson for being here. You know, I think I wanted to open up about having you there, and I'm glad you did, um, because it, you know, it needed to be tweaked, and you would, um, and so you did a good job of that. The other thing that concerned me during some of the, uh, talk, and then from your side was, was that this was an ordinance that we were passing, and it's not ordinance, uh, in this, a resolution, uh, so it just means it's either a A or a A, it doesn't mean it's going to be long to get made or changed. If I'm not mistaken, in the last year, this, just about this year, but within the last year, there have been two cases in the city of Long River where a homeowner defeated their home, stopped individuals from doing harm to their family, and so that means a There's a lot of people tonight, as we sit in this nice, warm room and drive in a comfortable chair, that are sleeping, sleeping on a sheet wisely, in Afghanistan, or Lithuania, or whatever Pakistan you want to say, defending not the second amendment, but one through So, I'm going to support the resolution, because if I don't, that I have to call my son, who's one of those sitting in that whatever stands on you, protecting your right and willing to die, he's already shot once, in Afghanistan, and if I didn't, then I've got to look even at it next time he's here and tell him why. If, if, like Commissioner Oliver said, if there was something here that I thought was going to change a major way, or make a law, or put us up against the Constitution, or a federal court, or state court, or whatever court, you know, there would be some questions, maybe more than what I have. This is the need that says we support the second amendment, period, and if you want to write one, it goes with every other amendment with it, then that's, that's, uh, that's how I would say we could do that to it, but in good conscience, I think we need to, to say we support it, let it stop there, we just support it like it is, and, and we want it that, that's all. This, this is one that, the, the, I'm sorry.
One you're referring to is one of Mr. Johnson's.
Correct, one of Mr. Johnson's. When we have our pact.
I know there's a lot of cohesion sitting out here, uh, I think there was some misconception about what this resolution was supposed to be about. It was not the commissioners to take away anybody's gun. I, I unfortunately didn't have a big problem with sleep on, but I spent four years in Marine Corps during the Korean War. Uh, I realize that that would be an indication that, uh, I support that life, I support the Constitution, and I certainly support the second amendment. And I think that every person out here has good intentions, and we all want to have for everybody that we come in contact with. So, I agree with Tim, this is a resolution that, uh, that Mr. Johnson did put together, there's two things that have been already done, uh, I, I rest that this board here can afford in any time, and if a party die, and a firm labor has supported the second amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America and of North Carolina. So, this resolution is, remember, if we hit back down to each other, to what he said, we do support it. And again, I thank all of y'all for coming, for your opinions, and just wish that, uh, when we all leave out here, that, uh, we can take each other's hand and say, friend, be careful. Thank you. I want, the other, I want to do that, we need, we need to, any of this surprise, if y'all want to.
Yeah, we, we were having.
Tim, did you make a motion for a motion?
Well, I said I support, I mean, take that as a motion if you like.
We want to put it on?
Probably, you just, can you show that, Kevin, so everybody's more?
I just have the bottom part. I just have the bottom part, I don't have any time.
But yes, that'll be my motion.
Anybody reading?
Um, I'll, it, it's, 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 this is what, this is what the others.
Okay, y'all, the resolution is.
A resolution declaring that Scotland County support the second amendment rights, whereas the Constitution of the United States is supreme law of our nation, and whereas the second amendment of the Constitution of the United States of America states a well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state throughout of the people to keep a bare arm shall not be infringed, and whereas the North Carolina Constitution, Article One, Section Thirty states a well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state throughout of the people to keep a bare arm shall not be infringed, and whereas each member of the Scotland County Board of Commissioners has taken an oath to uphold and maintain the Constitution of both the United States of America and the State of North Carolina, and whereas the Scotland County Board of Commissioners has been asked to defer against support for the rights of law-abiding citizens of Scotland County to keep their arms in accordance with state laws, and whereas the Scotland County Board of Commissioners wishes to express its commitment to protecting the rights granted under respective constitutions of our state and nation, and whereas the Scotland County Board of Commissioners wishes to express opposition to unconstitutional, unconstitutional restriction and infringement upon the protections granted under the second amendment of the Constitution and the Northern Carolina Constitution for all abiding citizens of Scotland County to keep their bare arms, and whereas the Scotland County Board of Commissioners wishes to express its intent to support second amendment rights in an opposition to any efforts to necessarily unconstitutional restrict such rights and to use its legal authority and court with advice of legal counsel to protect the rights of law-abiding citizens to keep their bare arms, and therefore be resolved by the Scotland County Board of Commissioners, that Scotland County Board of Commissioners hereby expresses its intent to uphold the second amendment rights of all abiding citizens of Scotland County, and that the Scotland County Board of Commissioners will exercise the authority granted to it by the legislature of the State of North Carolina and, and, given the Constitution of the United States and the North Carolina Constitution, and, 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 and,
Motion on your second.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. This one, what it did, but yeah. Well, the citizens haven't had a chance to shine in on it, haven't. On, on the first one, that chair problem, the folk had a chance to think about it, and this one, they haven't. So, you said it would be an outcry, is, would you just tackle it tonight and not wait a month? To put it up or down? I'm just asking that question.
I, I think, I, we have a motion and a second, are we, we need.
I, I appreciate what you're saying, I, I, but I don't think the discussion would be, it won't be heard.
For those that would be against this, it will make a difference to them, but the ones that would be for it, well, so, yes. I'm taking fair play.
Well, yeah. Well, I think we have a motion and a second, we need to do something.
Call for a vote, Kevin.
Call for a vote. All right, all in favor of this resolution that was in your agenda packet, that our county attorney fixed, all in favor, let me know and say aye.
Aye.
Vote aye. All right. What this place that you said, if I see it, is that you're just confirming that the resolution would be what we always does, to support the Constitution of the United States of America and North Carolina, and bear the right to one, the second amendment, as far as that is. All right, end.
Next item, just an update, on the Marlville Community Centers, on the discussions that we had with staff. All right, uh, back to the content of the community center. Last week, Brian Grant, First Division Director, and I did meet, talking about community centers. Uh, some of the directions that actually they had were kind of expanding on some of the directives. Not looking just at Marlville Community Center, but actually, the goal of coming back with a plan, with a vision, uh, for Board's consideration, which is actually looking for community centers around the, around the entire county, looking and addressing issues, uh, looking at not what the structure needs to be, not what the building needs to be, but coming back and looking at services to be provided, uh, and looking at what needs to be provided in Marlville, in Gibson, Armberg, Waverham, uh, and then as we develop those concepts on exactly what we want to, uh, what fits in the community, and in each community, find out, um, exactly what the best method, what the best capital investment would be to give us. So, later on, I am gonna be asking Board Consider a Day for a Hundred Percent. The day I have is April, uh, is April the ninth. Brian, is that we would have a goal to go over at that meeting, a vision, or a word to consider, uh, as we do that. Also, last week, I did have conversations with people in the state, or state home, about the possibility of additional outside funding. So, and, uh, the results of those conversations were favorable. We cannot apply for anything until we have a whole lot of information, but, uh, you know, I do believe there would be substantial support for funding to give something, so the county would not necessarily fund a hundred percent. Again, not guaranteeing, but that would be part of the vision that we work for. But again, this is not something, we're not looking specifically to duplicate one item in every community. What causes communities vary, their needs vary, uh, but we are gonna be looking, uh, probably, uh, with it, the first step in the vision implementation, when we do that, would be Marlville, followed by Gibson, and then also going back into Armberg and Waverham, uh, there at. Uh, so, what, uh, we're all gonna be looking at is probably more a five-year plan for the county as a whole. Uh, so, that's where we're going with that branch.
But not if I do a pack of ideas.
No, the goal would be to, uh, and it would probably be in the capital, in the capital budget, in next year's budget, July one, to actually fund, um, Marlville, this July. Now, I'm not saying we're gonna, be in there in August, but, uh, the goal would be to have it in next turn of the budget. So, that would give us time to develop something that we can get in and start operating, planning in July, in Marlville, and, uh, Gibson would probably be a fairly quick step, too.
Well, I still think, like, the Marlville project, to, to pull out that old Waverham plan and, and look, see how we can fit that to the site of that tow line, uh, and, and also send the site plan to that place, because they was wanting our, that would be, uh, the towing of the day, because of what we heard that night, that's what they want, and, and, and so, that's what they want, they're the ones that want to build for it, and that's what. And so, but we gotta get that wheel turning here somewhere, or will you, that's why I'm still trying to crank on.
Do you think, how a motion that we do that, whether that is a consent?
Well, I, I, I think we would make the motion to do that, we're committed, we're committed. I don't admit to it, I just wanna see what the, I love that image.
I thought we had decided, and instructed Kevin to, uh, get a set of plans, whether he used the ones from Waverham or whatever, and weave them along with what?
Right, well, that's what.
What I'm saying is, though, do we want the plans from Marlville to be looked at? If that's what we want, we need to say so, so Kevin won't be working on how he think we might get out of here. If that's what we want, we need to tell him. I'm sure he doesn't care, we don't. Which way we go.
Do we have plans from Marlville, or are you saying we have plans from Marlville?
No, we have plans from your city, from what? I have from Waverham, that we already have, and I'm saying, uh, if, if that's what, Jonathan, if we think we can save some money, if we can update them or whatever, we need to do that.
I think we should give it time to get all this together, and, uh, you know, set out. You know, the plans from Marlville based on what?
They no plans from Marlville.
They're no, I know, we gotta get plans from Marlville, right?
And my, and we are discussing whether or not we want to use or look at the plans from Marlville, or the plans from Waverham, to, to, to save some money, and my point is, if that's what we want, we need to tell Kevin.
Well, we gotta look at everything, I mean, we can't just say we really want Waverham, you know, give a chance, get all this stuff together.
You're missing what I'm saying.
I missed it, tell him, you missed it, explain it to me, John, you know it all, explain it.
So, can I make a, a, a motion?
No, that don't make a motion, John.
You're wasting air right now.
Two questions, Kevin, so in April, you're gonna bring to us a five-year vision plan, but that will include what you, what you see for Marlville, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, it, the, the, looking at the services that we wish to provide.
Right.
And if the board is satisfied with the service we provide, then we can, then we can look at the capital and go to supply the services.
And you think we got all that done, so that we can get in our budget, to our, that's the most important thing. Because once we can have the budget, it'll start rolling, and we know that we can do something on here.
We, uh, once we get the visions in place, looking at what we actually want to provide in Marlville, uh, we can start, and we will start developing budget numbers with that.
I, I think we got budget numbers before we take the action to get more of our bill on here.
Right, but if we do that first, we need one night, you will have, you will have to get about eight minutes.
I will not have budget numbers at that one time?
No, then you will have those numbers.
Yes.
I, I don't think we need to do a motion to that, just as ready for the main meeting. I just want it done, I, I, I just want it done.
Next time.
Mr. Carroll, board to the man.
Okay, um, we have three appointments, uh, tonight for our board. Uh, first is the Dugald Crime Prevention Council, and I'm Mr. J C D C, they have had an action in the board pack, Abby D and Kayla Alker have requested to be appointed, so I'll make a notice of those two, and the Dugald will be appointed to board.
I mean, and a second, all the members, you know, say aye, 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 aye.
Our second appointment is the Learning Home Community Advisory Committee forward, and we have an application for Sue Allen Arnett. All my permission to have Miss Arnett appointed to that board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all the members, you know, say aye, 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 aye.
Okay, uh, should be a short report tonight. Uh, first thing, uh, we have received the grant award for the Essential Single Family Rehab Program. This is a program that we've been getting, uh, on a four-year cycle. Of course, in the past, we were getting four hundred thousand and more, and now it is a hundred and ninety thousand, uh, and it is moving to a $30,000 per home for repairs. So, this is, in the past, we've been able to use this and actually replace some homes, uh, so that the scope of this program is significantly changed. And those were requirements brought down to us, not the requirements that we chose. But, so, we will be sending, starting out applications for this, uh, new program, or new cycle program. We do have applications for prior programs, uh, we will be contacting people who have applied in the past, and who have qualified, but were not selected. And so, we will be sending those out, as well as accepting new applications. This program is designed for elderly and disabled, uh, and there is an income aspect to it, so. So, now with this, anybody who's deemed eligible, a home inspection will be done, property making sure that it qualifies for the program, part of it is, means it's bad enough that it needs significant rehab, but not bad enough so that $30,000 is not touched. If it is a, if it isn't a house like we've had in the past, which needs to be demolished and replaced, this pro, that house would not be eligible for this program, because this program cannot bring it up to, um, or bring it up to a modified. I believe it is about $30,000.
Kevin, how would this be advertised, so people would know it's gonna be very competitive this time, half of the money?
Uh, welcome anyone, of course, those people that we have applications for in the past, we will direct mail in, a current application. Uh, and then also, uh, this just came in this past week, uh, so we'll be getting together an information package, sending it out to, uh, different agencies, so, 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 Department, making it available for me to get as well. Now, it is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, so basically, this is seven homes that we're looking to be talking for. Uh, now, in the past, we've actually been able to get finished with our initial allocation factors in other areas, so we've been able to pull the initial funds. So, there may, or may not be any different, you know, funds.
Except the loan amount.
Right, uh, but, uh, we do, you know, we should be able to get seven homes, which will not cover the number of applications that we already have in hand to do this.
Is that the $25 maximum, they say one time, a year ago, that the maximum amount of money, that the $25,000, $25,000 per home? So, it's, this would be the same?
Yes. This is gonna be very similar to that.
Kevin, is it like, those homes being used to qualify to get a grant, are those homes being sought in the first, like, top five, top ten?
Uh, what it is, is reprogramming someone's hands alone, uh, because it is the homeowner, um, and then elderly and were disabled get priority. And thereafter, from the home inspections, so, uh, most of the homes that have not had significant work, you know, chances are they not had any work done to them, so they probably need to be declined since. So, uh, it's gonna be based on that practice, based on the house condition.
I, I know some that, for some reason, they want, they didn't, uh, you know, was settled, or first go. And they can rule, so they had to do what they had to do in the past. Now, we got funds developed to help them out, but to then, we use those people first time, so we can qualify for a grant. Now, they not being considered in the second go. That's what the question come to me a lot, is, I say, well, I can't afford to patch up the floor or roof.
Right, and.
I can't wait, they can't wait, so they had to do something.
Right, and there are going to be certain things that need to be done in the homes, and this branch is about regulations going off that. You know, so, um, we want to encourage people to buy, you know, because we want to buy, you know, if it's seven homes, if it's ten homes, that we can impact, we know we're impacting somebody's lives here, uh, so we want to make as much as possible. But, you know, we definitely are wanting good people who ran that before, uh, but there's still no guarantee of who will actually do it.
What about developers? I mean, we have, you know, we compared several, we have $10,000 developers. If we're back, we allowed to do some patchwork, some of them.
I mean, yes, most we complete, as long as we have funds available, or most we fully pay our funds, we go back and guess, say if anybody else has left, so we do our best to clean the table, not do that.
But what a small pot, now, the table probably only has got a bear.
You know, the table was less hard than it used to be, but we do, when, in the past, when we've done this, even when we had $400,000, and we were doing complete housing renovations, complete restorations, we, one time, we almost paid $700,000 or $400,000. So, and it's just because our program was able to move. So, and if you're aware, homes that we did, and we'll make sure we give each of the commissioners packages and information that we have, so if there are people, as you know, need to apply. Because again, you approaching somebody and saying, you know, you ought to apply for that, that's something a whole lot different than me approaching somebody and getting a door slammed in my face when I'm asking them to apply. So if your personal touches, it would definitely be a lot more. Saying that, you're also not the ones who are going to make the choices of who gets and not. Also, the last month, we did get our jail inspection done, so it's semi-annual inspection. Of course, as normal capacity was an issue, we were actually four M A S over capacity, which is actually low compared to a number of years. That's, I think we've been at over 40 over capacity. So we have that advantage. There were a few changes in there that needed to be addressed. You know, there were two cameras that needed to have work done, and a sink drain, or a shower drain that needed to be filled, that needed to be replaced. And against some of those, we're going to ask some of those issues every inspection, period. Later on, jails, it will be a hard one. One thing that was also in the consent agenda, because we have talked about hot water in the jail, and we were going to continue to talk about hot water in the jail. But in the consent agenda was a budget that will allow us to replace the boiler for today, which is probably original, at least, is original to the expansions, which happened late nineties. So that will be replaced, doubt that that will not resolve the hot water iteration by any stretch of the imagination, but it should make an improvement. But we will still continue to look at that in next year's capital budget also. And we'll probably do something over a series of years. And as I've already mentioned, and this would not require board action tonight, but April 9, that's the Thursday after your, after our April meeting, we'll be asking that the board schedule a work session. This will not be long as the last one we had, we're looking at probably nine in the noon, just as an update to you where you are, or, you know. Where I am is planning budgets and coming up with final recommendations, which I will actually present to the board at the end of May. And that may well be worth a marathon for us. But if April 9 were for you, what we'd do is at the April meeting, we would recess from that day until this part.
April 9, quarter to nine.
April 9?
All right, April 9, nine o'clock.
Yes, sir, at the Morgan Center. The last item, and this was not in your agenda, but this is just a reminder or a notice. The Chamber is having its, it's a partnership between the county and the city and the Chamber. We are having our State of the Community address. This is the breakfast? This is the breakfast, March 19, yeah, March 19th at 7:30. We were looking at Scotia, but there may be a conflict there, so we will be pushing out the date as soon as we can. But we are scheduled.
You're pushing out the location?
The location, but we are scheduled for March 19th at 7:30.
That's not going to change.
That will not change since the beginning, 7:30 A.M., so yes, we'll be there, we'll get breakfast. Anyone who is inten, who is interested in attending, they can contact the Chamber to our S D P. And again, this is a, this will be a moderated discussion like we had last year, with myself, the City Manager, and our economic developer participating in a forum, who could have moderated a discussion with answers, or question and answer type. And that is all I have.
Mr. Carroll, if not, if any, if any, Mike.
No.
Yes, sir.
Thirty seconds, so, Mitch Malfrin, I was at the D.C. this past week for the NACO conference. Some good speakers, some good information. We had lunch with Dan Fisher, the Congressman, and we talked a length about the program for affordable housing and getting funding back to the cause through that, and also the foreign trade zone and airport management. So one thing I learned in the convention before, though, is that anything in that opportunity zone now, out of the 126 federal programs that all have grants and whatnot, the opportunity zone. If, if that is being applied for a program in that opportunity zone, it moves automatically to the top of this. So something to keep in mind is we do that.
Anything new coming up, D.C. here, anything different we should do?
Top, top thing was rural brown man, and Dan actually put somebody, it was about that at lunch, and Crowe and I, that was the thing.
Yes, brown man, you know, we were thinking about running cable over here in the ground, but that's not going to happen, because it's just too expensive for the development of our, for our companies. So we decided ourselves that maybe we could put up towels, and what was discussed, perhaps that's where we need to go and look at that, because that's doable, but running cables in our rural areas for a mile to one house, we know that's not going to happen. But that's what's, I've been looking at in the past. And I just want to say this, I've been going to Washington for the last 16 years, to NACO's conference. This was one of the best ones I've been to, it was the most attended, and Ben Cox spoke to us about housing, he was there on the show on that, Colin Powell, his name was Colin, but he said on radio, he said, you have to choose between Colin and Colin, or you call both, so he's Colin Powell. And he spoke to us, and the president came, and in 16 years, he invited every president, but he's the second one to take our invitation to resign and invite us to the White House. But President Trump came to talk, and it was on the list. We, NACO is just, we're business, we're not about parties, and it's one of the, you should have heard the speech, you've been impressed. And he did invite us to the White House, yeah, he invited us to sit there. I took his to the White House, I got to hear him speak, and when he's not political, he's good.
That is certainly your opinion.
I gotta agree, Colin Powell's a better speaker. All of the presidents, he's always dynamic, like I said, you see me one time, you see me.
So Colin talked about his book, he gave us a copy, I'm supposed, he gave $3,000, a copy of the way. And so that's what this meeting was about, about, about his political life. It was about the economy.
He said Colin Powell, who are you talking about? I was trying to recreate the books.
Colin Powell.
Oh, you got it, Colin.
Yeah, I gave it to my kids, and he also signed it.
Can I give us a chance to read it?
I give you dollars to read it, I'll give you back.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Shame on you, John.
Mom, I, I may just have been, talked about a lot of good things and bad things going on in our county. I've been around, I see two or three people who were present at a birthday party Saturday night for Virtue England, her 100th birthday at Rockwell Church, was an absolutely wonderful event. And she had been a member of that church since 1938. It was just a celebration of somebody's life, and it was, it was very joyful to see her.